And Jane?
How are you?
Good.
I'll call the meeting in order. Please.
Board wants to provide ample opportunity for public comment on matters coming reports. Your input is important. You wish to address an item already on the agenda? We ask that you do so when that item comes up for discussion. If you have a comment on a matter not on the agenda, this is the time during our meeting for such comments. The board would like to remind everyone in attendance that to avoid violations of individual rights of privacy, a member of the public wishing to address the board during this time will not be allowed to make any comments about a student, staff member, or a member of the general public. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm just coming back. I'm sure everybody heard I had an surgery this February, so I'm getting back into planning things. Hopefully Monday I'll be able to go back to driving the bus. I did go through the buses tonight for the first time since I had the surgery. And everything looks pretty good. I do need to get some oil to have on hand and some antifreeze to have there. I would be doing that, slow that stuff.
Thank you. Welcome back, everyone.
I've missed you guys too, believe it or not.
Please state your name.
Adam Breakfield. Uh, I guess, um, I've talked to a few people and, uh, I would like you guys to reconsider eighth grade participation in high school sports. Um, there's been quite a bit of success for eighth graders and weights all the way to one hundred eighty-nine placing and stuff, especially the wrestling. That's mostly what I know, I guess, but I would like my son to have that opportunity next year as an eighth grader. Um, I, I have, uh, I guess got some signatures and I, I don't have them with me. Uh, but I have a little bit of time into it, but I would like, uh, to reconsider that. I'd like the opportunity to leave that, uh, I guess, decision of the coaches and parents.
Have you, have you talked to the AD on this yet?
I have talked to John a little bit. Um, originally, uh, I guess he was not necessarily for it, but seeing well the success of what eighth graders have done here in the last couple of years in class B, class A, and double A. He's, uh, more of a warlord.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you. I'm going to push you through the board as we're going to have, uh, Buskey Cool as part of this team. I know he was planning on giving him, so.
I don't know, because I didn't perceive any notification that he was. I was expecting him to be here. If it's Susie Topp, you can set up a Google.
I'm sure he can. I will work with connecting with the guys. I'll send the link again.
Uh, recognition of teachers, is that you or the principal?
Oh, yeah. Is that off for perfect comment? Okay, so, um, yeah, we just wanted to say thank you to our teachers. We're very grateful for them and they do an incredible job and we had a lot of fun celebrating them last week. And we're thankful for the PTA to support us in that. Um, Jeannie Steele also did, um, some incredible, uh, work for our, our teachers and offerings. And we're just very thankful for the community and parents coming together to help us celebrate the teachers. They are the, you know, first boots on the ground and they make the difference every day for our students, so we're very appreciative.
I'd like to add that PT, they're also the marathon. They did a wonderful lunch for our team, so.
Lunch was excellent. We had a huge support on our teachers. Thank you.
Yes, thank you from the board as well. We definitely appreciate all that they do each and every day. Glad we have a strong, successful team.
Thank you.
All right, um, let's go ahead and move on to our student representative reports.
Hi, everybody. Me and Carson have been meeting and talking about what we want to do better now that we are student reps. And the first thing that I would like to talk about is in the middle school, I would like to have, um, a care closet or that's accessible both middle school and high school where we could do donations of clothes. And then we could also have hygiene products in there. And we, me and Carson are open to doing this outside of school. And we have people who would love to support us with that. But what we are asking is maybe what can we do as students to get a grant or maybe some donations from the community to be able to keep that going throughout the years?
And then Carson. So, the high school, we have ice baths in the locker rooms. And unfortunately, the girls, we don't have that cold water hosting to the locker room, so we have to use the boys, which we can't use throughout the year because our practices are at the same time and we can't obviously take an ice bath with the boys. So I was talking to one of the coaches of the football teams and he mentioned that we could fix that. And so we could like add a part to the theme in the bottom of the girls locker room so that we wouldn't have to use the boys locker room. So that would be possible, that'd be awesome, just so we can have it throughout all of our seasons. And it's kind of awkward during the summer, especially when like girls are walking out after the boys are done with practice and they're going in and it's just like, yes, we could get rid of that.
We have asked about that before and so it's a good thing we invited them. Check it out.
Because I know a lot of girls on these ice baths during this year. Hey?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also appreciate the school safety conversation we had the other day.
Oh, the lockdown.
So, we talked about some drills that are coming up, so good work ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Um, moving into the committee reports.
I know that the library board has been meeting and has approved a updated budget. Do you have anything to add from those that library meetings?
Um, no. Um, it was good to be able to meet with the county and get it straightened out, so.
Yeah, we also had a great working meeting. Uh, the county came over, we met with county commissioners and legal and worked through some of the, um, very interesting components of our library agreement. We're one of the only community school libraries, um, left in the state. And so it's kind of a complex working agreement that we have. And we put a lot of thought and time into it and updated that. And so we're making a lot of headway on that. And I appreciate all the time of the county commissioners and their team and the board members that have been participating. All right, are there any other committee reports that you guys would like to share today? We haven't had too many committee meetings since last board meeting.
Strategic planning went really well. We're going to have one more meeting. Do you guys want to add anything else?
Now, there's a lot of discussion on the last, towards the end of the last meeting to have one more meeting. Um, we're kind of starting to dive into some goals and objectives, objectives, but the overall goals to also help. It seemed like those, looking farther into the future to pull more participation and staff and see how we can encourage them and use their, gather their positive things that certainly we can, we can almost say it's a catch on our end, but it has to be.
Yeah, they've been really good meetings, helpful meetings. I think they've given us all some, some goals and objectives to work for and how we can better utilize a strategic plan. And just making, you know, month to month, day to day, board decisions, uh, discussion to have on that. And, yeah, I think we, we always feel like there's, once we get there, there's just not enough time to get through all the discussion. Actually, get to the end each time. It seems like we always need a little more time and one more meeting. Hopefully one more meeting and we can kind of get those goals put on paper. Something that everybody can agree to and participate in to help guide us.
Yeah, and definitely looking for more engagement from community and staff members. So we're trying to think of different ways of how we make that happen. Um, so that those goals are all of ours and, um, we agree and we're all working towards them. That's it for committees.
Yeah, negotiations, committees, met a couple times. Uh, we're going to discuss the CBAs and those agreements a little later. Um, but I think we officially concluded that. Um, we're, it would be in sessions and I think we, we accomplished some good work with all the parties in that. Um, so, yeah, we'll say the most of it is when we discuss some items to take action on.
Quite a few meetings.
Quite a few meetings.
Thank you all for your time and work and the teachers and, uh, us, the five union members that attended as well. They put a lot of work into it, so thank you.
So, could we have Jason now, at least the link is there anyway?
Yeah, I, I've sent out that in the link and it's live, but we don't have him yet.
And he may come a little bit later.
Yeah, he just said the message you guys who are spending, joining us a little bit later. Okay.
Okay, so, looks like now we're going to go into the principals' reports earlier, so.
Um, first off, I just want to acknowledge, um, a big thank you to our first and fifth grade families. Um, we had, since our last board meeting, we've had those family luncheons. And also time, as kids get older, we have less people attend and that's not the case anymore. So, um, it's very, very well attended and I know the kids love it and so we really thank everyone who attends those. We acknowledge teacher appreciation and thank you for all of you guys, those of you that do. I do want to, um, comment on the first grade. My, the first grade team has done a great job for a few years now. I'm doing a mini career fair. And also the thank you to all the people that came in. Um, they had a nice variety of people. They had pilots, wild line, wildland firefighters, agriculture mechanic, NASA, and pizza, pizza shop there this time. Um, and so those first graders really, it's like about eight minutes, which is about all the volunteers really can handle with these groups. But, um, eight minutes of just getting letting them to see what these groups are about and give them a little piece of it. And it's just real cool. So, um, so I want to thank the first grade team for doing that. It's really a big, um, compliment. Uh, kindergarten update, uh, so we have set fifty-eight students, um, kindergarten. And with our numbers, um, we have projected numbers for twenty-four, twenty-five. Right now kindergarten is projected at sixty-one, with our pre-K. So we are over the mark of three classes. Uh, first grade is projected sixty-seven, second sixty-four, and third sixty-fourth. So our small group has been going through forty-four and fifth at sixty-four. And we have a confirmed fifteen, uh, pre-K. So we are, that's something we need to look at about our kindergarten.
How's that compared to the other numbers from last year?
Well, last year we had almost seventy percent of our students, but we didn't have pre-K. And so we have a few students that went to pre-K. Um, and we still have not, I mean, we saw fall, which we usually see ten to fifteen kids for each turn of fall. And right now on that fall list, we have four. And I've counted those coins, so, so we could be close to that number again. We've got to keep it rolling left and right, so we move in here. Um, and then so literally we left, we had nineteen students accepted and fifteen are into the program. Um, and so for future on that, um, everyone I spoke to, if it wasn't a full-time program, it probably wouldn't have succeeded. The families are looking for a full-time pre-K program. Um, and so part-time, just to keep in mind for future. Uh, there were people that confessed that since they heard it might be a part-time, they didn't even move forward with acceptance. So they just just want a chance that they would, they would have a part-time and go to the beginning of that. So the pre-K program will follow the same as kindergarten, which they don't go the first day and they do half-days to kind of transition them and go. And they'll be eight to three eighteen time period. Um, and then we had our twentieth year for the Arbor Day poster. Um, it was, so they, the theme was based around twenty years. And so we had, um, those, all those will be hung in the hallway just outside the learning stairs. Um, Mr. Rill's been working on some tracks for those to be hung on. And so this year's, uh, poster we added was drawn by Jovi Ferreira. And then we had our other runner-up from Milan Gravy and Gravely and Rita Campbell. And, um, but a huge thank you to all the kids, they all did a great job. I know the judges had a difficult time, um, deciding who was going to be that post talk on, so they all did a great job. Uh, PLC days, we, uh, have everyone that was an attendance for state CPR certified now for two years. And we're working on the twenty-four, twenty-five schedule. We're almost done with state testing this week, um, just a few glitches with our Chromebook. I'm not being up to date, but we're, we're getting there. We're getting new ones in, so. Um, I don't know how many of you have seen the summer camps, but those are fully up and running and filling up. Um, a couple of things that were added this year for the grant. I added a luncheon learn, so students between, there's a morning session and afternoon session. But from eleven thirty to one, um, they actually stay. There's a self-paced program that they'll be using and they actually get to have lunch from the, uh, lunch program. So they'll stay, they also want their with them, they'll be working on skills, they get lunch. And so there's no, um, time between, they can just stay. And I also have first before and after care on the day we have planned. And so that was something I, people reach out on that they could not have been in those camps. And to get more involvement and mobility to, um, out of those. And then we have all kinds of versions of camps. We've got them going to West Elston, down to see the remacment, um, at Cully Plus Battlefield, to Lewestown, um, lots of hiking, a glow in the dark camp, um, the Burns are going to Pickograph Cave, uh, you name it culinary, we've got all, all kinds of versions of camps over there. And then the fifth day, we have two more sessions going. I am working on the gold, which are due for next year, which are due June first. Um, I am already working on adding archery for next year. Uh, there is a program with the forest, forest department that can give us all the equipment and everything. Um, pottery will be kept and then adding drones. And then I've been asked about adding some weightlifting morning for our eighth graders and stuff. Um, so we can start expanding that program. So those are a couple of things that I'm working on for gold.
All right, um, I've always said I keep everything I ever did. Um, I guess I didn't really realize it, but I sent the board report from May of twenty-ten. I don't like Connecticut, I don't remember that. So, anyway, um, we'll actually assert my needs well with what I'm going and talking about. I guess, uh, a couple of things, uh, uh, one of our Holocaust remembrance for the eighth graders, uh, I've discussed for several months now. That'll be, um, Monday at six PM right in this room. And it is a culmination and a, a showing of all the projects they've done and they've learned about that over, um, the last several weeks. And I think it's a pretty powerful evening and a really nice evening. So if anybody has a chance to stop by, I think it's really worthwhile. Um, you have to come and go at your leisure between six and eight in here. Um, our eighth grade awards is May twenty-eighth, seven PM. Um, traditionally, we have a couple of board members come and hand out that eighth grade promotion certificates. If anybody would be interested in doing that, that'd be great. It's about a, about a forty-five minute ceremony. Um, we start right at seven and have you out of there by eight. If anybody would fill that need for us, it's a nice thing to have for the kids.
They're going to be on a pod.
Likely.
Probably. Uh, the twenty-eighth, that's the Tuesday of last week at school, the Tuesday after high school draft. You guys are clearly going to argue over who gets to go. That's okay. That's awesome. Thanks. If plans change, just let me know.
Oh, wait.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Thank you, guys. It is a nice thing, or it is kind of a nice evening. The other thing I wanted to talk about a little bit was, um, kind of the, the scheduling challenge that we're involved in right now. And, uh, you know, I know, I, I guess I just, I understand completely our financial situation and what, you know, that we have to make decisions based on finances we have available. We have to find a way, you know, as things, um, all come together, we got to find a way to make the budget work. And, and I understand that. Um, I've been in this situation a long time, as you clearly see. Um, but, uh, the, the thing, I guess, I would just like to, to point out some concerns of mine as we look to the future. Um, you know, this year kind of the discussion is, is moving, uh, a teacher perhaps and then filling it with shared staff from the high school. And I know they have their own set of circumstances that are tough with that. But I can tell you from a historical perspective, over the last twenty-five years, the majority of cuts have come out of the whole school. Our staff is, um, not nearly what it was at one time. Um, we've lost a lot of, uh, staff, you know, we've had over the year and some of that we've given up voluntarily. Uh, pretty much to be team players to help make situations like this work before. Um, as you can see from the data from twenty-ten, uh, our involvement has stayed very, uh, very steady over the years. Um, in fact, we're larger than that now. Um, and it's just kind of, I, I guess to me, advocating for middle school age kids that, you know, I don't think there's an education expert out there who wouldn't say middle school is a very pivotal time in kids' lives. And, you know, you're looking at those, uh, pre-team to early teen years and they have a lot of needs. And, and it's, it seems like the solution with middle school is always we can just patch it together and make it work. We already have a high percentage of shared staff. And the problem that leads to is when you lose staff that's dedicated to the middle school and by that I mean their time is dedicated to the middle school, that's what they are as a middle school teacher. Um, they help do a lot, and we have a lot of things that go on in middle school that we need people to do. And when you're having people for a period, one period, they don't have that connection to students. They don't have that, you know, we have to have a way to fill all of our duties, new duties, um, student supervision, all of those things. And all of that becomes, you know, you lose a little bit of that every time you take away a full-time position and piece it together with something, something else, all those little tasks. And, and really to me, it just feels like we're moving more and more towards a creation of almost one school. You know, if we have, we already have kids. It, it really puts us in a tough spot. We try to hang on to our identity because I, I truly believe that a middle school is important for kids. The identity of having their own school. And when it becomes just a completely shared thing, I think something is lost in the middle school experience. So, I guess I just am kind of advocating for the future. Um, you know, I, I think it's important to keep that history of where things have been given up over the years and why and how things got to be how they are. And I just encourage you guys to try to consider those as, as we make, and all of us, not just you guys. But, I mean, we're the ones that have to piece that together and make suggestions. I think as a team, I think we do definitely, but, um, just kind of, uh, wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And, and one thing I would tell you, if we had, uh, something from the last fifteen years here is you'd see our attendance rate, like our, our absences for this month are almost double what they were in May of twenty-ten. Um, and our attend, our middle school discipline situation is much higher than it was at that time. And it's just, those are the needs, I think, that kind of sometimes get left behind. It's one thing, yes, we've got a class covered, that's great. And we have it covered by a very capable teacher, which we definitely would have. But, um, it's those other pieces that make a school a school that I think are important to keep. So, I just encourage you guys to keep that in mind in the future as we, you know, obviously are going to continue to face budget issues. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or talk to any of you guys about that at any time if you have questions or concerns about it. Just let me know. Thank you for listening.
No, thank you. Thanks, Brett, for that. I just wanted to make a follow-up comment on that. I, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not even to speak for the rest of the board, but I personally am really dependent on the administration and administrators here, including yourself, to provide us with some, some courses of action to consider. Because you guys are in the trenches along with the, the teachers. You know what's going to work and what's not going to work. We really need to get some, some viable courses of action to consider so we know what our right and left limits are and what the effects will be to those, uh, options are. Because if we just make uninformed decisions at our level, it's, it's going to be a recipe for disaster. And we've got to be able to have, uh, strong debates over the pros and cons and come up with a well-informed course of action move forward. And I will say this though, uh, it's my intent and hope that we don't have to make some cuts, that we build our student body more, um, and that we get all those kids from freshman year to graduate all the way through. And we're going to have to get outside the box. We're going to have to get transformational in order to do that. Meaning the ways of the old, we're going to have to probably do away with and, and get uncomfortable and look at some new, outside the box courses, at least try it and see if they work. Because if we continue to do the old and we don't so much migrate with, uh, the way education is going in this day, I feel that we're going to be in a position where we're going to left with no other option to make cuts to our staff and administration, which I don't want to do. Um, so please keep that in mind as we move forward through this next year. Uh, and, and that's where for the teachers and the coaches alike, every class, every extracurricular activity, those students have to come away with the best experience possible because word of mouth is our best recruitment. It, it truly is. Every experience counts. Every student counts. And the more we can do that as a school, we truly will become a school of excellence and people are just going to innovate us, which we do. So, that's just my thoughts on that, so I appreciate your comments and appreciate your help moving forward with that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, so, um, wanted to start with a couple of shout-outs to get one, like we always do. Um, I would like to shout out to Mrs. Botham and the music festival and drama students. If you didn't get a chance to, uh, watch the musical, um, uh, with Alice in Wonderland. If you didn't get a chance to, uh, watch the musical, um, with Alice in Wonderland, it was fantastic. So they did such a great job with that. We have some really, really talented, um, high school students here and some middle school students for awesome jobs. So, yeah, very excellent job with that. We also had our music festivals and I just wanted to highlight, um, a couple of young ladies. We had Jasmine Martin and Lexi Davies, and they both, uh, got superiors on their solos. And then band and other choir ensembles all got excellent ratings. So they performed very, very well at the district music festival. Um, we did have a couple of twelfth by the state and they also, um, performed quite well there too. They got very close to, um, being in the teleports with excellent ratings. So, um, you know, for, for new, um, teachers stepping in and trying to grow this program, I think it's gone very well in those areas for sure. So lots of kids having a good time in music. And the spring concert was really nice. We had performed a lot of their, um, district music festival pieces and a couple from the, the play as well, musical as well. So, and then also to Ollie Lappman and our student council in the high school. Um, just did an awesome job, um, this week. We actually, they've had several activities going on, um, this week in particular, this Monday. Um, we actually did our very first incoming freshman 101, I think is what we ended up calling it. And, um, club activities fair. This was, uh, born out of a student council idea. We worked together and made it happen with Mr. Rock. Um, my understanding is middle school kids absolutely loved it. It would be the eighth graders that are coming into high school. And the goal is just to ease that transition as much as we can from high school or from middle school to high school. And we've done, like, probably do freshman orientation, we started that a few years ago. This is just one pre-step before that, just to give them as much information and exposure to what high school's gonna look like. The flip side of this is that it was basically all student to student. So the high school students ran the club and, and, um, like, activities fair tables. They had tables set up in the gym. We divided their prayers into two groups. House group came into here with the student council president and vice president. Haven and Cooper did a great job giving them just kind of the incoming freshman 101, what to expect and things. Um, lots of good advice for them, how they can be very successful when they come into high school. And then they got to go to the, the, the club activity fair and everything had tables set up. Whether it was F C C L A, um, pet band, the dra, drama, all of the sports, everything. So, um, F F A S, F C, F C B L A, all the Fs. And just again, right by students, not by their designers, the tables were around by the students. And I just think it was, oh, I'm really happy to have a few logistics now we can make that better, um, next year. But overall, the experience is really good. So just a huge shout out to them. It was a, it was a, it was a good thing we've been trying to put together and provide sometimes. So that was awesome. Also, I know others have said the same thing, same with us. P T A, um, student council also did an awesome job at teacher appreciation week. They had, um, the high school playing Survivor. It was absolutely hilarious. That staff was super cute. We had a dip and it got really wild and fun, um, for the week. So we just really appreciated. We got to have a lot of laughs. Um, that were much needed in the spring as we're, we're all chilled and tired. So the kids, we included the kids, got lots of funny videos and the students were all in and participating for their two first teacher appreciation week. So it was really fun. We had a good time. Just lots of thanks to all of those folks that made that happen. Um, let's see, uh, we are finishing our actual AP testing. So our chemistry and physics students, um, have the opportunity to take the AP test, um, for both of those. What that means, they gasp the test with a, with a particular score, a particular level. Then they actually get their college credits for those two classes and do not have to take those as incoming college freshmen. We had quite a few students take them. They took, uh, one test on Monday and they're taking the second one on Friday. So they're coming in on the go-to-school Friday to take their AP test. They're kind of like A C T is scheduled at certain times and you have to take it when you take it yourself. Thanks to Mr. Schnickman for partnering all of that. And Mr. Schindel for his awesome job teaching, giving those kids the opportunity to do that. So. Um, we actually, our last P L C day, um, Brad and I brought the middle school and the high school teachers together to do some co, uh, like co-curricular work. Um, some of the things that we wanna make sure we streamline again, just kind of, just kind of meshing and streamlining that experience moving from middle school to high school. Make sure we're not double-teaching curriculum, make sure we don't have gaps. Um, make sure that the middle school, the high, you know, have those conversations of, you know, what the high school sees that maybe middle school still, that the students need to get or what we're doubling up on. Um, I think some really excellent, excuse me, productive conversations happened. And actually to kind of blend the chances, I do, they actually sat down and looked at scheduling and, and came up with some pretty innovative ideas that way too. So I just want to congratulate them on some really hard work at middle school and high school. Um, trying to make some of those difficult situations work and just making sure that we are truly giving students a quality education, um, from middle school up on through high school. And that transition is going more smoothly. So we were really excited to see them have such awesome conversations together as colleagues. So that was very productive. As we are rolling downhill here to graduation and the seniors' last days, we have a lot of planning going on, obviously. Um, our seniors' last day, um, is actually next Wednesday. We are a week away from our senior students, their, their coursework for high school. And then graduation will be on Sunday. So, um, lots of things happening with that. They're getting pretty excited. I think they're ready to be done. Some of them are ready to be done in, like, November, but that's okay. No, we, we, um, you know, we treasure them. We miss them. Sometimes it's hard to say goodbye, but we're very excited for them. So many plans and aspirations and goals and things that they're ready to do. We've been going through a lot of scholarship applications and we just truly have, you know, um, just great kids and they are working hard to, um, build some pretty deep futures for themselves. So I'm very excited to see where a lot of them are going to take that. So, um, as the board knows, we obviously invite you to be on stage at the high school graduation, the culmination of their, um, towns and schools experience, or their high school experience at least. And, um, we, um, the board usually sits when they can. And then I too also could use some assistance handing out, um, diplomas and, um, scholarship packets and things, just extra hands to make that all happen for graduation. So if anybody's interested in helping us on Sunday, that would be fantastic. Need a couple. Uh, graduation's at two. So we usually have you, have everybody that's gonna be on stage show around them, just so that we're all over night. I think it was, I think it was, I got that at 26. Yeah, May 26th. Graduation's at two. We would have you guys show up at one. We're gonna open the doors at 1:30 for, um, parents and general public. And the kids will be there at one. So we can get them right on those doors, guys.
Don't need to do it next year, but, oh, and you hear I do. But I can do it this year too. I get the chance to be scheduled. I can go, I can hopefully be there. Hopefully, I'll be here.
I'd like you all to be there. I do need two names that I commit in the program.
I'll, I'll leave one.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully all the board can.
There were Jason and Jason. Yeah, give back to me, um, Jason, whoever else might wanna, I hope so. Get those programs done.
You're really working for the ones you had.
I am. We gotta, we gotta get you back tied in, so. I can take middle school.
Okay, there we go. She's doing new middle school.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You guys, we'll get that all solidified. And again, please, please, please come sit with us on stage. It's a pretty, pretty great, pretty great day. We have a pretty streamlined, it's not, it's not too, um, long and arduous, I promise. Um, lots of upcoming activities. I too, like Brad, I don't know, we must have just been really, I left a lot of stuff that's already happened on there, so just ignore that. Uh, we have the state golfers in Shelby. Um, they started today, so we have Alice Bremer up there golfing at state. We're very excited for her and hope she's doing well. I haven't checked in with her, Hazel, yet today to get an update of how we're doing. But, um, she's competing there. Um, we have divisional tennis in Belgrade. The, the, um, fif, or 16th and 17th. Um, high school track divisionals are at Laurel and they are on the 16th as well. Um, the Lady Gold Dogs track team actually won districts by a lot. They did great. And our boys play sport and we had a lot of PRs. We had a ton of kids, um, qualify for divisional. So they did, they had a great day over in Belgrade last week. They did really well. Um, and then we'll roll into, obviously, our last thing, seniors' last day, state tennis, state track, um, graduation. And bam, there we go. The end of the school year, last week of school. So we'll be busy. Egg day's also coming up. We're excited for that. That's quite a tradition, that last Thursday before school gets out. A lot of the high school kids go up and also help, um, run all of the, um, teams and all of the activities for, you know, so. Busy, busy time.
I do have one comment I would like to add. I wasn't sure where, but it's talking about athletics. I think it fits in. One thing I appreciated, and it's, it's a small thing, but when we're talking about budgets, they all add up. You know, the first track week that I was able to go to, the weather was really cold. And I appreciated seeing the track kids using the football coats. And I told Mr. Horn, Coach Horn, that, that, you know, we appreciated seeing that they were able to utilize and share that, that type of equipment instead of the track kids having to come and ask, you know, can we buy something that is already sitting in a duffel bag? So those are the types of things that, you know, I appreciate seeing between the programs and utilizing that. Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments?
All right. So I, one more, um, comment about teacher appreciation week. Um, I wanted to thank Ms. Hanson and her team of baristas that have the Blue Dog Coffee Shop because, um, they provided coffees to all the teachers, um, on Monday. And then us as an admin team provided their coffee on Thursday. So they were busy delivering coffees all over the school. And that's a great project and program that those students and, um, her team is running. So thank you to them as well. That was a fun way to help celebrate our teachers and have students involved. I also wanted to, um, let's see, I wanna talk a little bit about advanced opportunities. So back to what you were saying, um, Mr. Reagan, we are excited about the advanced opportunities that are coming next year. And Mr. Schnick and Ms. Heverin and the high school team have been working on rolling out that implementation. We're excited about offering even more opportunities this year. Double the, more than doubled the opportunities that high school students had to take college credit courses and dual-credit courses and all the different formats. Um, and brought in additional colleges that the students could choose course offerings from. And we'll also build that in, out into more, uh, pre-apprenticeship and workplace learning opportunities next year. So getting out of that box and doing some new things to give the high school students more experiences. And hopefully that, um, gets them excited and keeps them engaged in their education. And that, um, advanced opportunities grant offsets the costs even more for parents where there might not even be a cost for, um, those courses. So we're excited about that and I appreciate all the work that's been going into that. Um, I passed out a packet of, of just a very high-level flyer of two of the major safety grants that are now open, that we talked about earlier this year. The STOP grant, um, is, is an exciting one. It's from the Bureau of Justice. And it is focused on technology and personnel, professional development for staff, um, for the S R O, for training on threat assessments, is, which is really the direction that we've moved in in school safety, where we're training on how to catch those red flags and prevent any challenges. Mental health support's a huge part of that. We're working on how we can expand that for next year, utilizing some online programs. And then the COPS grant is focused more on collaboration with local law enforcement and physical safety measures to secure our school. They are very, um, large grants. The packets, I didn't print the applications, for example, that are over 35 pages. And they will end up being, you know, 100 pages or more grants that will take, um, many, many hours and a lot of work to put in. So if we do decide to move forward, worth wonderful. We just need to know that that's gonna be a major time commitment of staff and, um, a focus that will need to take place as these are due mid-June. So I look forward to talking to the board more about those. We've already talked about, um, moving forward with applying for them. But I would, um, what we need is we need to get more details on, on the direction we would like to go with those grants. And, um, exciting opportunities. But, um, we'll wanna put a team together and make sure we have a good plan in place so we can have a competitive grant for those. Uh, when we are looking towards next school year, we have been, we've started to work on our handbooks. I've asked the principals, we meet as an admin team at least once a week. And I am very thankful for my very strong admin team. And they have been, uh, starting the process on reviewing their handbooks with all of the new policies we got this year. We did a huge overhaul of our Kansas School District policies last year and thought we were in really good shape. Spent hours and hours having policy meetings. And then this legislative session, we had a whole new, um, packet of policies come out with, um, out of the last legislative session with all the changes impacting schools. So we have been doing ongoing policy work. And now we have to make sure that our new policies line with our handbooks again. And we want to, um, we've been talking about when we are putting together a new athletics and activities handbook that will have more details and more information on that, that will look at, um, you know, the hiring process and all of those different components of our athletics and activities, as well as what we need parents to know and all of that information. So we're updating handbooks and all of the different handbooks. Um, it's something that we're working on right now. We also have, um, been talking about facilities. And I know that we have some up, upcoming projects we're looking forward to. We are going to be the gym floors this summer. And then we are potentially gonna go to it every other year. If we take really good care of our gym floors and put some good ground rules in place, we believe we wouldn't need to do the gym floors every year. So that's one of those things. Um, but that is a project coming up. We have lights to fix in the gymnasiums, as you all may know, and some different components like that. So once we get our new mini set, after we go through the next few sets in our, um, board meeting, we will plan out facilities, walk through like we do every spring to finally out the projects for the summer and upcoming year. We have open positions right now. I put some flyers out on the table over there. So, um, we're keeping these posted and updated regularly. We always open internally first and then go out to the public. Our vacancies are always posted on the website and throughout the building. And we share those. I appreciate M T forty-three and others sharing those around town as well. We unfortunately have an elementary principal position open. So we're going to be making sure we get the word out about that in the marketing. We have started receiving applications for that. We do still have the pre-K position open. And, um, depending on movement, we're not sure exactly which other positions we will have. But we have hired some incredible teacher applicants for next school year and have been onboarding them. We're very excited about that. And we always need bus drivers and substitutes. Right now, it has been very challenging to fill, um, our, our substitute. Um, pool has dwindled a bit. So if you know of anybody that would like to join us as a substitute or a paraprofessional, we could really use some help, um, here at the school. So we are hiring for those positions and some others. And getting, making sure that we're staffed up for next year. And getting, making sure that we're staffed up for next year. We are also closely monitoring student numbers. Mrs. Hartman and I were going over the pre-K kindergarten numbers this morning as she shared. That's definitely an area that's always challenging because we never quite know where we're going to land. But that can also happen in other grade levels that we've seen before. So we're, we're watching those numbers closely. And I've been talking to Brad and Sherry a lot about what we can do with our high school and middle school courses, make scheduling work and positions work. So I appreciate Mr. Rock's comments and sharing that information. We also have been talking, I talked to the PTA. They did send a letter. And have, I have had conversations with many of their members about how the staffing process works and how we work to retain our teachers here and evaluate them. And a lot of that works through the negotiated agreement. So the evaluation process is outlined in the CVA. So that happens as part of the negotiation process. So I look forward to joining an upcoming PTA meeting where I can have a more in-depth conversation with parents about how that works. And with their support in, you know, I think the things that the PTA has been doing are the kinds of things that help us retain our teachers, really celebrating them and honor them, honoring them and making sure they have the tools they need. So we'll continue to collaborate on that. And baseball, I wanted to let everyone know that, and say congratulations to the baseball organization that has been fundraising. They have met their fundraising goal. So we are moving forward with that. I have been working since that notification with MHSA and my appreciative of the Athletic Director and Billings. Him and I spent quite a while working on things together over the last week. And it's always nice to recreate the wheel and to collaborate with our colleagues. So there is kind of this whole new set of work going on and they're calling it the emerging sports. So new sports programs. And so I shared some information with board members on emerging sports and kind of tracking how other districts are doing it. Making sure we do this process correctly. I know that the baseball families want to, you know, and the donors want to know that their money is going to be earmarked for baseball. And it will be set in, you know, coded for baseball. So that, that is true. That's how that will work. But we'll make sure we follow correct process to make that happen. And then, you know, becomes like any of our other sports at the school, where we follow the processes for ordering and hiring and all of that through the school. Per all of our rules and MHSA and the state law and policy and school board policy. So we will be doing that and putting a policy in place so that new sports programs can fundraise for the first year if we have any other additional sports come forward as well. We are going to be posting to hire for the head coach position soon. We just have to make sure we have a few more of those boxes checked and we're doing everything in the proper order and correctly. So we've been consulting with MHSA and legal and, and others on that to make sure that's happening correctly. And it's just been really fun and busy at school. And it's exciting to see the kids are having fun and enjoying all the activities and this spring. And we're all looking forward to graduation and hope to see you all there. So I will leave it at that as we have a lot more I will be talking about tonight. Yes, Jason.
Congratulations. So thank you guys for all this. Sorry, not there in person. And thank you for the updates. That was really helpful to have that at the front of the meeting rather than trying to rush through to the end. So, so I think you have that. I do have some questions. One is related to the STOP and HOPs grant. You identified that we were to have some priorities. And one of the questions I had was, does it sink there to mid-June? So questions, are we trying to look at a special meeting between now and then? Do we need to still review or some kind of input from the board on those grants? Or are you guys just running with the priorities, trying to staff and, and, I mean, we have. But we left this other grant. Do we have to have a special meeting to get those approved? So just a question on that.
It depends on the grant and I haven't gotten far enough into the applications to see if we need board approval or not. But the due dates are not before the June board meeting. We will probably and most likely have to have a special board meeting because of the vacancies that we have in order to fill the principal position and teaching positions. Make sure we're all staffed up. And this is something we could add to that agenda potentially. So it is likely that we will have a special board meeting. I think that I can get input from each board member as we look into these. I don't know that we need to have a separate meeting to get rolling on the school safety grants because you guys did make a motion to move forward with grant funding for school safety measures previously.
Okay, thank you. I just was curious. I mean, I think you guys, the school administration and paras and classified certified staff all have much more intimate knowledge of the situation than what some of the boards propose to do. But just look forward there to keep you.
Of course, yes. We will put together a team and move forward. Thank you. I don't know if you were able to hear, with Sherry was taking volunteers for high school graduation on the twenty-sixth. And we put you down. Is that good?
That's fine. Yeah, no, I'm happy to help anyway. Cause on the webinar side of it, for some reason, you guys didn't get to talk to me. I volunteered then, so I'll volunteer now.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, we've got you down.
Go ahead.
In regards to the handbooks, can we consider doing away with the dress code? Most of our, nearly all of our sports uniforms don't need it. And I know people don't like to enforce it. And I think it causes confusion, confusion with the younger kids. They're like, this is the rules.
Actually, we, yeah, we can't convince them because that's not an agenda. She can know your point and we can bring that back. We would, we would have to have that on the agenda for anybody.
We can bring that, we will bring the handbooks before the board and they are ready. And hopefully the June meeting as our principals will be departing for the summer. Probably not much more concerned about. So that will be the goal. So we should talk about that. Thank you.
A couple of questions on baseball. I've heard the numbers nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Or do we have an official number? How much have we raised so far?
I do not know the official number. I know for sure that they did raise the twenty thousand dollars. And are, they have presented the school district with a check in that amount.
My name is Cardi Johnson. I'm a treasurer for Kansas City Baseball. Just like we need to talk to. We transferred the twenty thousand dollars. I do know that we've got some other incoming funds that are coming. I know that we have a board member that's working with different and then how we go on what we do with those other funds so that we don't run across the fundraising issues with the sports because MHSA has been pretty strict roles. So we met the goal that the high school had. Here you go. And we wait till that gets ironed out with the other funds.
Thank you. And at all the other gates that we need to meet as far as establishing the sport within, in the MTHSA and all those requirements or those are done?
The MHSA application, we will do at our next board meeting. So we'll mark the box for our baseball on there. And we're, we're working through it.
We're all impressed.
Yeah. And it was good to hear from Billings today that they're the same hope. Really, it's new territory. So it's nice to be able to call, like I said, to call Collins and, and hear that we're all, we all have the same questions and we're all working through it together. So we're trying to make sure we do it the right way. Appreciate everyone understanding and being flexible as we work through that process.
We will move on to the consent action items, minutes and warrants.
Hey, one question on the, on the board. You mentioned that we were looking at the summer we do on this morning. I see that there's a cost on on March fifth. Is that a different?
The Western Sports Board, yeah, sorry.
It, it is the fifty percent deposit to do the flooring. We, we referenced the quote that was given from March. That's why you see the, the back date.
I was just wondering if that was an else.
Yeah, sure.
I guess on the minutes on page seventeen, I think there was some confusion on, we have several motions, two motions. But the minutes, as I've read on, basically said that maybe we could do that. I think that would be to clarify the page seventeen regarding the baseball election and how much funds are going to be raised and how much the district is going to be committed to.
Page seventeen?
On page seventeen.
Oh. I thought I was understanding that the baseball minutes were actually in the packet before. Yeah.
We referenced it in the packet. That's why I was confused by it. Maybe they just didn't do it.
There was, Daniel had a correction from last, that's what it is. Yeah. Yeah. It was just a correction. Yeah. Sure.
Yes, Jason.
I thought somewhere in the minutes due that a member, Truesdale, had been cited as, or shown as approving the calendar. But I think he was oppositional with the calendar. That's correct.
I'll make that change.
I'll move to approve the warrants in minutes as presented.
Oh, second. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes and warrants. I'll say as presented and adjusted. Considering the discussion. Discussion of comment. Although the people please say aye. Are aye. Are those opposed? Motion to that. Moving into action items. Can this vote, school board election.
Good evening. I'm Angie Paulson, Broward Public Service Department Director and Elections Administrator. For twenty dash twenty dash fourteen, kind of coordinated. After the board receives certified tally sheets of the school election, the trustee shall campus the vote. So I will first hand out the election results for the twenty twenty-four Townsend School District Number One. Results, Mrs. Flynn will have the ballot status from elect MT results. This is derived from the State of Montana system. We scan in each ballot and check signatures. The number you'll be paying attention to is right here. Mr. Reagan will have the election machine tape, which are results from the machine after ballots go through the machine. And then Mr. Truesdale will have the election computer results, which is the computer USB that pulls the results from the machine. And then Chairman Noes will read the number of votes out loud for each candidate to declare the newly elected candidates for Townsend School District Number One Board Trustee for your term. So when he reads those out loud, Mr. Reagan will just want to make sure that what he says matches your tape. Okay? And you should have a copy of that. Mr. Davis.
I got it. Jason Noes, three-year term, one thousand thirty-two. And that's a plan of three-year term, eight hundred ninety-six.
And those two are declared the winners of the Townsend School District Number One Board of Trustees three-year term. And so now I will need each of the board members that are present to sign the campus of votes and declaration of results.
I think we all have to sign.
Yes, please. Appreciate it. And Daniel, I'll also be. And I did want to note that Daniel Truesdale was elected by acclamation because he didn't want anybody running against him. So congratulations to all of you. And I have an oath of office for those who, except for Daniel. I will have you take the oath today and I'll get to your oath. You can stop by my office tomorrow. I'll have you sign. What we'll do is have you each stand one by one. I'll start with you. And we'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jason Woods.
I, Jason Noes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect and defend.
Protect, support, defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge duties of my office.
As Townsend School District Number One Board Trustee.
As Townsend School District Number One Board Trustee.
With fidelity, so help me God.
With fidelity, so help me God.
And Mrs. Flynn, please stand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Vanessa Flynn.
I, Vanessa Flynn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
As Townsend School District Number One Board Trustee.
As Townsend School District Number One Board Trustee.
With fidelity, so help me God.
With fidelity, so help me God.
And, so Truesdale, please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Daniel Truesdale.
I, Daniel Truesdale.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
As Townsend School District Number One Board Trustee.
As Townsend School District Number One Board Trustee.
With fidelity, so help me God.
With fidelity, so help me God. Then I'll sign it tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Sign it, but there's no way.
I guess we will, we do need to have a motion to approve the election.
I'm going to approve the election.
I move to approve the elections as candidates. I move and seconded to approve the election results as candidates. Is there any discussion? Discussion. Any public comment?
Chairman Daniel and Jason both second at the same time. He has one of. And rock, paper, scissors.
Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. You all opposed? Motion passed.
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, we will move on with the board reorganization. The board will select a board chair and vice chair based upon nominations. And we will also formally. Quarter. So floor will be open for nominations for board chair for coming here. I move to nominate, uh. Jason Noe as board chair. Second. And move.
Say we're all.
And moved and seconded to approve Jason as the board chair. Discussion. Discussion. Yes, I will just add, um. I appreciate, uh, the support of the board. Um. I am willing to do it. Um. And I, I have enjoyed working with. All of them, just different trustees over the, the years and learning to work with. New people and new ideas and. Doing what we can to make Townsend School District, uh, stronger and better than Cool District. So again, I do appreciate the support of everyone. Is there any public comment?
Can you clarify who second? Okay.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passed. Motion, uh, nominations for vice chair.
I can now be chair of the board chair.
I guess I have to second.
Thank you.
It has been moved and seconded to nominate Chase Reagan as vice chair. Discussion. Discussion. Public comment. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passed. And motion to approve Casey Williams as district clerk.
I move to approve Casey Williams as district clerk.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Casey Williams as district clerk. Any discussion? Discussion.
She does a great job.
Thank you.
Very fortunate to have her. Appreciate the board she does. Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passed. Uh, reorganization, uh, committee assignments. Hopefully everybody has picked them already. Uh, we'll start with student services committees. Currently Vanessa Chase, Alwynn, Daniel and Truesdale.
District Chair.
Yes.
I don't know if you want to take these one at a time or two on the one pile of trees, but I talked to a board member to get them. By advocate, he wouldn't be using the same as in for all the cities. For all the earnings, there's three of us that are new. You probably got a year in and you've actually started to learn what this one's doing with committees. And so I think at least. A couple of us are in favor of staying as in if you call it that.
Yes, that is definitely an option. If that is the will of the board, we just need a motion. For that. I'll make the motion to keep the committees the same.
I'll second.
And moved and seconded to approve the committee assignments as they were previously. Any discussion? Discussion. And public comment. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passed. Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Nobody ever had that bright.
Your dog days are cool.
Um, request county election administrator to conduct the twenty-four twenty-five. This is pretty straightforward. So, as per MCA twenty dash twenty-four one seven, by June first, each year, the trustees of a district. May request county election administrator to conduct certain school elections during the twenty-four twenty-five school year. I move to approve the request the county election administrator to conduct the school elections during the twenty-four twenty-five school year.
I'll second.
And rugan seconded to approve the request to the county election administrator to conduct school elections during the twenty-four twenty-five school year. Is there any discussion? Discussion.
Senator, correct this question.
Yes, sir.
Was it, was it, but, um, Mr. Truesdale's seat back on regular schedule? Their next cycle be getting that seat back into a three year term?
That is correct. Yeah. Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passed. Approve the master contract for the twenty-four twenty-five school year.
They are active in terms, not as a CBA, so the negotiated agreement is. Complete after many conversations and. I'm not sure if. Were you guys from the negotiations committee would like to go over a. A quick pilot of substantial changes or if we're ready to move.
You're gonna go on? No, I'm, I'm good with it. So in your board packet, just real quick, is the kind of red line edition that does show the actual changes. The one you have in front of you will be the official black, but it does not show the changes. So anything that is questioned is in the board packet. Um, a couple of things, um, we changed the, the duty here. The days that their salary, you know, we've made it to match what the actual duty year represents for the teachers. Be the hundred sixty-eight total days, hundred fifty-seven student days, four PLC days, seven PRR days for total sixty-eight. Um, we outlined additional responsibilities. Um, this is kind of just a point of clarification on what. You know, what we expect as board teachers, as professionals. Um, every year there's a little discussion about, you know, some of the extra things that come along. And, um, so section seven point three, and we kind of outlined those. And, you know, the union. And the Chase and I, we had some good discussions on the importance of that and just making sure that was very clear. You know, who is, who is expected to do what and, and to make sure that those hours are accounted for both for the teachers. And for the board and the district. Um, PLC days, we added some opportunities for the union to have. Be a part of designing what those educational days look like for the teachers as they will have a representative work with the administrator. To help, um, outline those agendas for those days. After that, some of the things are just times that kind of needed change to match up with the change that came along for day school week. And, um. Yeah, a two percent raise to the base was the agreement. Um. Obviously, the district wishes we could do more. The teachers would like more. We all know they deserve more, but. That's what your budget is. I think that's it. We're going to certify. Um, I guess, you know, the other thing we're going to talk about in a minute too is that, you know, the calendar, um, we did agree to a change on the PLC days. Kind of taking a reduction in a few of those days, kind of to help with the difference in pay. I know everybody's time is valuable. We just want to make sure that. You know, Townsend is a place that teachers want to come and teach and the teachers want to stay and teach. So we, we worked back and forth. Um, those are valuable days. I think they're valuable for educators to have those professional learning opportunities. But again, we also know that they have time and family and we want to make sure that everybody feels. Adequately compensated.
I'd like to point out that the board packet that was online has the old salary schedule.
Yes.
Okay. I think your people were aware of that.
Yep. You have the. The correct one in the black.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Any others?
I just wanted to make sure that the calendar aligns to the days we have on seven point one. You know, the duty, yeah, the days are not current. So how many student days do we have on the calendar? I was just trying to help them. It's right. Okay. We get so many different calendars going around.
All right. Very glad to hear that. Is there a motion to approve the master contract? Make a move to approve master contract. Hold on a second. And moved and seconded to approve the master contract for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Discussion. Discussion. Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passed. Approve the classified agreement for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school.
So in the classified agreement, there was also an adjustment to the pay matrix and some discussions regarding paraprofessional positions. And the additional duties, um. For students with higher levels of need and. I'll let you touch on anything else that you. Think we need to mention, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Reagan?
Well, no, there was only changes, um. Section six point two substitute compensation, um, an employee requested to substitute for another employee shall be compensated at a rate not less than. The higher of their regular wage. Um. In the past, sometimes if they were asked to be a substitute rather than, uh, para, for example, for the day that they would have taken. The substitute wage and this will make sure that they stay at their, whatever, whichever the higher wage is for the day. Um. The other one is pending approval with the library board. We've added Easter. Sunday to the paid vacation simply because it involves the, the library now that it is open on Sundays. Then it will, it would have an effect on those because of Easter Sunday, that day would be closed. So now they would receive vacation pay for that, uh, that day as well. Just those employees that directly affect. And the last. It is, uh, inclusion pay coverage. Um, employees assigned to special education coverage shall receive inclusion pay rate based on their normal workdays regardless. Of the absence of students. Essentially, once, um, our pairs have their schedule for the week. Right now, currently as the students come and go, they, they had, if a student was absent, they had to go back to the, the lower rate of pay. This should just help stabilize that for them when it is basically essentially not their fault that the student happened to be absent. So. The pay will match what their schedule says, uh, in the event that the student moves away and that, that coverage is no longer needed. And that, that does not apply in that situation. Basically, it's just for the absence on a day to day situation. And the other, we, we removed the inclusion pay column from the matrix. Basically now. Before the, the inclusion rate was a dollar higher than just the base pay. But because of the way that metric moves as it goes up through the columns, it wasn't necessarily an even dollar every time. So we removed the column and just said inclusion rate was one dollar higher than whatever your regular parent is. Just tried to make that cleaner. Hopefully it's easier for Casey and the owners to keep track of it. Um, again, good discussion. Appreciated the time of the classified union, the time they spent, um. Again, helping us try to keep the best possible people in the school district doing the best possible work that we can also appreciate their time. So, motion to approve that contract. Motion to approve the classified staff agreement.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified staff agreement for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year during the discussion. Discussion. Any public comment?
I just want to thank you for. Keeping it moving forward and figuring out the right questions they ask. To try to understand what we're asking for. Because once you got the, once you started asking the right questions and we were able to. Explain it better to you, it was. Much better.
Um, I appreciate everybody's time and commitment. All of that's. Everything, everything we're here to do is for the students and so I appreciate everybody.
And I saw a comment on the inclusion card there because an awesome asset to that because they do, they, they work really hard and potentially deducted because. Their students didn't show up, just wasn't right in there. There's been a run around like to move their heads off, trying to cover everything else. So. So I appreciate that.
Our parents are very important. We couldn't operate without them. So.
Any other public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passed. Um, prove court contract.
So we have a contract for Casey Williams and a contract for Pam Watson for a time that I would appreciate your approval on. So we can continue moving forward with them. And I'm excited about the working relationship we have in the business office right now. Things are going really well. Um, Casey and I are thankful to have Pam's historical knowledge that she agrees to the table and understanding of many of those things, um, at the state level. It's, you know, even hard to find someone with that level of knowledge. So the hours. That she puts in in the afternoon, um, a few days a week are, are very helpful and Casey has done an incredible job, um. And really. Cleaned up our personal files and. Um, you know, with getting rid of our files no longer need and all of that work just. Does a great job, really took a lead on the health insurance, has staff sitting down at her desk and. Just is very helpful and, and does a great job. So I would appreciate you approving their new contract. Do we not have a copy? No, I did not get a copy in the packet. We were, we just went through them before this, but, um, they, I can get those to you as well.
Those are.
These are changes to the contract. I, the only reason I'm asking is. For approving something.
Right, sorry, I should have, I, I forgot. On the way out, I didn't grab that one.
Everything was the same on the, the two percent raise across the board with the exception of Casey's contract. Casey's contract went higher because last year she had only been here when we did contracts for a few months. And last year's contract, she agreed to stay at that same level for basically eighteen months that first time. So based on the work she has done, you know, getting successfully through the audit, basically we went back a year and increased. She got the same increase that everybody got last year plus the increase for this year. So a total of six percent. All the other contracts, we've done it two times. That's the only change.
There's the extra time. The breaks.
Yes. Yeah, we discussed. Casey's ability to basically rear. The vacation time of. Like the student, so a Christmas break, like she, she has the ability to take the same Christmas break that, you know, her student would take. And Thanksgiving, so those were the few things, but rather than making her come in on those breaks when nobody else is here, she doesn't stand. Thank you. Okay. Now we got a long question, right?
I'll, I'll refer the staff contracts.
Hold on a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the current contracts for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five during the discussion. Discussion. Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Administration, administrator, administration, more than one contracts.
So I just, you know, besides the changes that came from the negotiations and the contracts are in the office. Chairman Noiz and I were just reviewing them before we came over to make sure I got all the correct changes in them. So on the principals, they went to a hundred and maybe eight day contracts due to the four day school week. And they also got the two percent increase and that's a contract for Mr. Rock and Mrs. Heatheran.
I'll move to approve administrative contracts. I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the administrative contracts for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five during the discussion. Discussion. Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Prove the updated calendar.
Alright, we have coffee. Is this another new coffee?
No, remember we had to make, we did do one change.
Because it's not election day.
Oh, yes.
So this is the, this is the.
Like, oh my gosh. Okay. Okay. We're, we're on election day, so that's, okay. So. And the only other change from the previously updated calendar was that the PLC days that were removed from the negotiations were removed from the calendar. Any other major changes that you would like to know from the calendar committee?
No, it was just those four days and then the afterwards of the election, they not.
Okay. I'll move to approve the updated calendar for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the updated calendar for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Discussion. Question. Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Prove the ratification of the local agreement of the special education cooperative more than they have.
So we participate in the Pricely Perret Special Education Co-op and our co-ops are very critical to us. That allows us to have access to speech psychologists, school psych, school psychologists, occupational therapists and those critical. Components that we need to serve our students and we do have incredible staff from the Pricely Perret Co-op. That we have in our building regularly. Our speech pathers are always just here at our school, for example, and does serve preschool students in Bradler County in Canton. Mrs. Muckers, both assets for our team as our school psychologists and is here almost full-time. I think she spends about one day in white sulfur. So we do have. Solid team and I'm glad that we've had longevity with them, the current staff from the Pricely Perret Co-op. And their director has also been amazing, Mariah, and so we would like to continue working forward with them. We wouldn't be able to do without.
I'll throw through the ratification of the local agreement of the Pricely Perret Co-op. Been moved and seconded to approve the ratification of the local agreement of the Pricely Perret Co-op. Discussion. Discussion. Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Now we need to appoint the Pricely Perret Cooperative Board Representative.
I tried nominating some of my colleagues, but they have a lot of work to do during the time of the meetings. So I was seeing, I was just seeing if somebody else was interested or would like to fulfill that duty, but it does, the meetings are held during lunchtime. Thursday is about once a month and the, the Pricely Perret Co-op meeting occurs. We do all the hiring for the staffing for the co-op. We review the budgets and all of those important components. But I will. Volunteer if no one else is interested in talking part of it. I'll move to appoint Suzie Headelen as the co-op board representative beginning July first, twenty twenty four.
I'll say, been moved and seconded to appoint Suzie Headelen as the co-op board representative beginning July one, twenty twenty four. During the discussion.
They are great meetings. I do enjoy the time with our neighboring school districts and colleagues to talk about special education issues and. All kinds of things that we're facing our past that region. So it is a good opportunity.
Question. Public, public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Prove twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five MREA membership and fees.
You have the information in your packets. MREA is a group that we've been a member of for quite a while. They do provide. Really great aspect on how the policies and legislation impact us as a class B school, which is different from. The information we get from some of the other school organizations. And I do feel that it's valuable. I do reach out to Larry Crowder with MREA quite a bit. And think that they do a good job of representing us and, and keeping us in the loop on the. The areas and the legislation that are critical to us as a class B school as well as school law updates and school policies. So for example, the general policy package, but to send information on how we might want to rethink them for rural schools and different components like that.
Is there a suggestion on any options for?
Yes. The one that I would suggest is option number two. We do use MCS.
Suzie, can you help me understand? So again. The need for this one, I know it seemed like last year we had two or three or four of these associations we could roll off to. I'm just trying to understand our process and quickly go on to the other.
Yes, so I do appreciate the information that I received from MREA. And they do put on and participate in the professional development opportunities for our rural schools. They do be advocating and kind of like we, we talked about. Where they specifically advocate for us as rural schools and I think that those are important components. We do utilize, you know, the MCS membership and I'm not sure if Vicki takes advantage of the food bid membership through MREA or not. But I do not use them for legal, so like I said, I wouldn't recommend option one. But they, they do provide a lot of resources to us as a school district besides just an advocacy organization, which is what some of the other groups were that. Came and spoke. So I do reach out to them for assistance. Like I said, some of those aspects come into play where. A lot of the, some of the policies are written. A lot of these things are written are geared towards our double A's. So then when we're trying to put that into play in our school, that's when we reach out. So I do reach out to them quite a bit. And I don't want any of you guys to work with them if you have any thoughts. Do you guys, you know, I think enough.
I just know they're very rural school centered and so they definitely have that perception and have boys and guys to help. Because we do have different needs than the general rate of the high schools. So our school is in general, this, so.
I, I work with them on customizing the policy or. It, it's similar to NTSBA, but it's more specific for our school size information I can get. I think for the cost for two thousand five hundred dollars, I would say I've definitely. Got in my, he's funny friend.
Yeah, I would add, you know, it's one of those things that it's tough. If you tried to sit down and pencil out, you know, your, the dollars spent or something, the dollars received specifically through this district. You know, you would probably be challenged to do that, but you know, if you follow the news and you follow the legislature, whenever there's something that comes up, you know, regarding schools and especially rural schools. You know, these guys are there and they're advocating and they're, they're fighting for all of the school districts. If we didn't pay the, the membership fee, would we see a difference? Probably not. But I, I think it is appropriate, you know, for us as a district to, to show support for the organizations that are out there showing support. It is a challenge when you, you know, we're looking at all the dollars and cents and trying to decide which one do you keep or which one. But I do believe that Pricely Group is doing beneficial work that does affect town medical.
Yeah, thank you. Just another, kind of what I was looking forward to is, like you said, I'm trying to balance the other organizations who belong to the total cost across the board. I mean, I'm sure between the three or four, five, six, eight organizations we belong to. The professional organizations or just individual district organizations, we spend quite a bit of money and so just trying to make sure that we're maximizing. The services that they provide. I mean, if we're not utilizing some of the. Memberships and that kind of stuff, it's basically free, but then it might be a member for other reasons.
Yeah, absolutely. So Suzie, to remind me that we're going to take a closer look at another association that we belong to because we don't think it's, that it's not this one. And we're not giving a bang for the buck for it.
Yeah, there's some curriculum ones and things that we, and we don't, we did not renew the memberships, like. Yeah, there's a couple of them that we weren't utilizing. There was some on curriculum development and different things like that. And we really have cut back. I know Townsend School District used to contract out with some different groups to fill out certain reports and different things like that. And we now do those as an admin team. We know other contracts that work out with some of those organizations and individuals. So we really have cut back on three of them and even more this last year.
Then, I mean, don't get me wrong, okay, to be part of these organizations, I think there's value for certain professional development and other reasons too, but. I just, I, I just try to keep graph, you know, again, wiring, why don't, what do we get for it? You know, and that kind of thing is tangible to get to the point, yeah, it might not be a dollar for dollar, but collectively those small dollars go along with it.
Oh, no, I appreciate it and we, we took a careful look at ourselves to consider. You know, if we were really utilizing the services and which ones we were in work. So I think that those are great questions. And if. You guys are able to go to Mcel for the school board training fall conference, you will see MREA and will put on some opportunities for you as board members. And do a really great job and they're very involved in the Mcel, in the, the school board and, um, school administrator training that happens in the fall.
Is there a motion? I'm going to go through the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five MRA membership and fees for option.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five MRA membership and fees with option two selected. It's in the discussion. Discussion. Public comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Prove student attendance agreements.
Alright, the information is listed in your packet. When another student that lives in Bradler County that is wanting to attend the Helena School District.
What grade level?
Twelve.
Did they give a reason why or did we have like an exception or do we have?
This is under students.
Oh, excuse me. I don't think, I don't think they've ever attended here.
Yeah, because I. Yeah. Yeah, the student attendance agreements are a weird formality. I don't know if. They are new to town and the parents are working in Helena or what the situation is. We just get the paperwork. Sometimes we don't, you know, meet them.
Move to approve the student attendance agreements. Hold on a second. Been moved and seconded to approve the student attendance agreements. Is there any discussion? Discussion.
Does this may. The cost of the district situation, are they running costs, do you know cost?
Not this time. There's no cost.
Any discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye. All those opposed? Motion passed. Personnel. Um, just one question. Did we have a few agreements?
It was just one.
There's one. Thank you.
I think those copies are in the folder somewhere. Sometimes we both put a copy in this folder and then.
Oh, okay, sure.
We're just overly efficient in the business office. We're just overly efficient in the business office. All right, so for employment, we are going to start with 24, 25 employment. So for next school year, and I will present a list. Pending background check will be what I'm hoping for. And so we have for. Oh yes, sorry. Okay, so we are going to start for employment for 24, 25. And we are going to start with basketball.
Girls' ball.
We are starting with high school girls' basketball. And. We have David Lawson first for high school girls' head coach. We have high school girls' basketball assistant coach Kevin Reed. High school boys' basketball assistant coach Dan Haringfeld and Devon Zino. Elementary education, Holden Sampson. And. Right, not under summer. Oh, okay. And we have, I have more than that, sorry. We have Denise Spockham for. K-8 educator. We have. Daniel Douglas for archery instructor. And after school program.
We need those ones that are not on the.
Yes. Okay, so. For employment for the 2025 school year. We have high school girls' basketball head coach David Lawson, high school girl basketball assistant coach Kevin Reed. High school boys' basketball assistant coaches Dan Haringfeld and Devon Zino. Elementary educator Holden Sampson. K-8 educators Denise Spockham. Archery instructor Danielle Douglas.
Okay, obviously, we're going to split some of those off individually. So we will start with high school girls' head basketball coach. David Lawson. I guess first of all, just ask what the recommendation is from the administration.
I recommend the removal, renewal of David Lawson for high school girls' basketball head coach.
Okay, just so everybody's aware. Closed executive session was possible. David was notified of that. And David in writing submitted a waiver of his right of privacy. So that item will remain in open public meetings. If there are people here to comment on that. A few guidelines, basically, everybody will have one opportunity to speak. Make sure your comments are directed towards the board and not towards one another. In case things keep going back and forth, that's not what we're here for. It is, your comments are directed to the board for that. And I guess with that, we'll start with, you know, a motion to have on the floor before we go into the full discussion.
Mr. Chair, I can add a motion. By move, we do not renew Hank Ovi's basketball, girl basketball day loss.
I'll second. So it has been moved and seconded that we do not renew David Lawson as head girl basketball coach. Is there any discussion?
Is he, yeah, I, I, go ahead. I have one question, just point of clarity, I'm sure you checked that out. Is it still, does a motion no longer have to be positive? A motion, I believe, had, in the past, a motion had to be positive and then you could vote. I don't think that's in Robert's rule of order anywhere. It was always a school board, I'm just, then you can vote against the motion or whatever, but you can't, I don't believe have a. But you guys probably won't want to, I do.
That's our understanding as well, that it has to be stated in affirmative and not Robert's rule was ordered, that poss.
I guess just like, I don't know, I don't mean to overstep my bounds, but you can, you can make a motion. Does not necessarily mean you support that motion.
I guess I'll be honest, I don't remember reading that, but it does seem very logical to me that that would be the correct course of action. So I guess if we could, let's, let's make sure just for the technicality point, let's make sure we do that correctly. Or at least what we believe to be correct. All right, I apologize for not knowing that part of that.
I'm going to vote it.
That's my understanding as well, for the sense I do, yes.
Just for the record, should we just restate the motion?
Yeah, Jason, are you willing to make that same motion?
I'm trying to follow the conversation, but I'm not exactly sure what that means.
The, the understanding is that the motion needs to be in, or in a positive nature rather than a negative nature. So everybody can clearly vote the way they want to vote, but the motion itself should have a positive nature.
So something like it would be. Recommended that we renew the contract, is that what you're thinking?
Yes, because that is the recommendation from the administration.
Okay, so then I'll move, we renew. Coach Lawson's contract pending successful background.
Just a point of clarification, I think this is incorrect. And Jason, you don't have to make that motion either.
No, he doesn't have to, I asked him if he wanted.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm clearly in opposition of doing it, so I don't feel it's. I guess I'm, I still try to follow school. School order versus other order, I guess.
Isn't, ultimately, the answer is always the same. Like, if the votes are still, it's just whether you're saying yes or no to the end based off. Yeah.
So, is there a second? I'll second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to renew David Lawson as head girls' basketball coach for 2024, 2025.
If we're going back to the original motion, is that?
I would just strike the original.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. Apologize for that. Confusion, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just don't believe that we're in the right seat on the bus in this position. I know we've had a history of kind of some issues with the basketball situation. I just, I just don't think it's the right fit in the right position at this time. We, we definitely need to look at our hiring practices. But focusing on this position, I think it's just not the right fit.
If they speak, that kind of segues nicely. I just want to make sure that things are there from the admin team side of things. We definitely, due to proper evaluations have been done. Any areas of improvement or issues that need to be discussed have been discussed and thoroughly addressed by admin. The current admin team and, and coach. Recommending team, obviously administration, the AD, myself, et cetera. We are more than qualified and definitely more than capable, myself included, to interview, more than experienced. To interview, make recommendations, and we do it, the whole entire process with professionalism and integrity. We stand by our recommendation to be hired.
Any discussion?
Well, I'll be honest, every time this issue comes up. My immediate response is, okay, this again. I think this is the fourth time in the six years that I've been on the board. And it seems, seems more often than not to be, not necessarily a coach problem, but a basketball problem. And. To me, the administration has recommended the, the hire of a, a coach who's been through this before. Multiple times, which to me reiterates the fact that it's a basketball problem, not necessarily a coach problem. But also I know there are legitimate concerns and I don't want to minimize. Different people's experiences. I do think here at our school, whether it's in the classroom or on the court or on the field. I think we should be doing everything we can to build these students up. I think they should be, when they're ready to leave, I think they should be just bursting at the seams, ready to go. I don't think, we don't want them questioning their self-worth when they leave here. So I guess that's my, my comment.
You know, I, a couple of things that. I guess I've never been to a job I'm advocating for by proxy, but not to show up. So first off, that, that doesn't sit well with me. More important to that, I take these decisions very seriously. Whether it's a coach or a teacher, it's, it's very serious to me. And putting emotions aside. I ask myself, is this a one-time deal? Is this a second-time deal? Is, is there a trend? Or what is that trend? Is the trend positive or is the trend going the other way? And with this circumstance. Not to be tied in any way to the boys' basketball program, this circumstance there is a trend. And it's going the other way. And it's not about, everyone deserves a, a second chance. This is beyond second, but this is going on third, fourth, and that's the trend. And that's my biggest concern with the situation. And I had some questions for him that I would have loved to ask to hear to see how he would respond. Because I think that's important. If you're the head of a program, the head, you should be able to come here and, and plead your case and say, I'm the right man for the job. I'm the right woman for the job. I'm it and here's the reasons why. Yes, I made mistakes, but I'm going to own up to them and I'm going to make changes. That's what I want to hear and I'm not hearing it. Like Vanessa alluded to, this is an example that we're sending for all our kids. Our kids should be looking up to the heads of these programs saying, that person inspires me. I want to be a coach someday and emulate that person. After this year, no matter how this vote turns out. If Mr. Lawson is rehired, my focus is not going to be on him anymore. Because if you stand by this person, you condone it. And as a board, I shouldn't be worried about a coach. I should be worried about who's managing the coaches. So I just want to come on record and say that. If we say we are for the kids, then we need to be for the kids. Our audio has to match our video. So how can we say we're for the kids with all that happened this year? We had issues last year, we've had issues in middle school football and say we're for the kids and recommend this action. Our audio and video have to be nested and that's why I stand where I am at. If our kids are the priority and we want to make this an institution of excellence, that's why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote. And I really wish you'd been here. But I haven't.
I honestly don't have a whole lot to say. I don't have. Much for interaction with Mr. Lawson when it comes to coaching enough to where I would like making a judgment on that would be appropriate. So on that side of things, I remain neutral. I, I guess what little I have had. Has been. Has been positive. Maybe that's not everybody's experience, but that's what I have experienced. Beyond that, I. If I feel it's, it's sometimes difficult for me to make a decision. Based off of the minimal interaction. So in this case. And in many cases, I, I would. I seriously have to consider and fallback of the administration's. Recommendations based off of the day-to-day interactions with that. To the rest of it, I, I, I wouldn't be lying if I spoke anything towards it, I, I don't have the experience in that.
These are always challenging. Times of year, kinds of decisions that have to be made. Definitely a part of the job I don't enjoy. As a parent, as a community member, trustee, all of, you know, I've watched this cycle that we're in. As Vanessa alluded to. And we just go through coach after coach after coach. And I don't think it's for the right reasons. I think we've lost sight of what extracurricular activities are for. And I, I think our focus sometimes as parents. Has shifted too much to, you know, it, it's just about football or it's just about basketball. And it's not about developing young people into adults. You know, I mentioned this the other night at the forum, you know. Less than 7% of kids in high school will go on to play college athletics. But every kid, 100% of kids who go through athletics has an opportunity to learn skills that will carry them on in life. And dealing with difficult people, dealing with a difficult coach, dealing with difficult players, teammates. Those are all part of learning and development. And my support is, is for the program, you know, for towns and schools. Mr. Lawson has, you know, has some learning to do, he has some improvement, I will acknowledge that. I've listened, I've taken many, many phone calls. And I understand, you know, why some parents are upset. I can understand why some kids are upset. But I have to look at it from, you know, we, we have to have some consistency. In our programs if they're going to be successful. And I don't mean just, you know, making it into divisionals and making it to state. We're going to have successful programs that build better people. For society, for our community. for society, for our community. It does take consistency. And I still stand behind that our teachers, our educators, the ones that went into a career of teaching and educating, in my mind, we should still give some priority to those people who want to coach. And right now, you know, if, if this doesn't pass and, and Lawson is not rehired, we open this up, I can almost guarantee there's not gonna be a teacher in this building that is gonna sign up to be a coach. Because they see the writing on the wall, year after year. If they make it two years, they're lucky. Three or four is almost unheard of. Somehow we have to get away from that. And I, again, I'm not saying that, you know, the coaches right now are, are perfect. I know they're not. But I think we have a team right now with Mr. Lawson and Mr. Reed. And we saw a team of coaches before that, very similar, that, you know, I heard all the complaints about the head coach and the assistant coach, you know, was kind of there to help keep the program, help keep the kids, keep the parents, and that, that working together still creates some successful learning opportunities, character building, life skills, all the things that extracurriculars are designed to do. And somehow we have to get behind it as parents and community members, staff, we've all got to get on the same page. You know, we've been talking about strategic plan. It's all gotta be together with the same vision and the same goal. And I am going to continue to support the recommendation of the administration because I believe it's the right thing to do for our school. I understand that there will be players, there will be parents that are mad, and I can understand that. For that, I'm sorry, but I do believe as a district, we have to come together and get some consistency in this program. Any further discussion?
Well, I just, I don't think, I don't disagree with you, actually, guys. Um, in terms of trying to assist the team, I don't disagree with you in terms of trying to make, um, it's not about where it's been launched, it's about character. And I don't, I don't think at this point in time, um, the coach is ready to display a character that one, wanna fill the foundation on for for that longevity, for that consistency. It is, it is not, um, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with what I've done on your students. Um, and as a matter of fact, I don't agree with some of the actions that were taken. Um, and it's one thing if you're being matched or the J V coach or the D coach or the ninth, the freshman coach, whatever. When you're the head of the program, these two seconds, Colin, I don't, I don't agree with where it's currently headed, where it's going. Um, it is about the students that wanna play basketball, the students that wanna watch, that wanna be involved, that wanna manage. Um, I, I just, I just really struggle to see that the positive side of where this next year goes with, uh, you know, a good majority of your students not wanting to be involved, not wanting to play there, not wanting to look up to or work with the coach. Uh, it's just not a good foundation to build that consistency. That's the, we're not, we're not that far apart in terms of wanting the same thing, but you need to start off with that.
I would just like to say that, um, you know, Mr. Lawson does acknowledge, um, mistakes that he made and improvements that he made. And he is very ready to move forward in his, in his possible management session.
You know, I just feel like we're setting Coach Lawson up for failure in a way. We have Coach Reed who has proven himself, put Coach Lawson under his tutelage. Coach Reed has a phenomenal resume, I agree. And that's setting someone up for success. And I'm, it's, you're just, that's what we do, we do in the business world, we do in all facets of life. Why are we doing it different from the school? I don't understand. There's a natural progression. You put people in those positions when they're ready. And by putting them in there when they're not ready, you're setting them up for failure, hence you're setting our kids up for failure.
Um, from my understanding, definitely not to take away from Coach Reed, I think he's incredible, and I love getting to know him and work with him, but from my understanding, the interview committee, um, made that selection intentionally, and it was based on high school coaching experience. I know that he has a lot and a very strong background, but from my understanding, it was, it was a bit different. So, um, you know, they, they thought through the way that they put the two of them together. And, um, I understand you have listened to the concerns as well. I've also heard from a lot of parents that had a positive experience. So I don't want to take that away from, from either of the coaches either. Um, they, you know, it's not all negative. We had many families that did not have issues or challenges that came forward. So, um, I think we have to keep that in mind also, that, you know, some people had a bad experience, and I'm sorry for that, but that, that wasn't across the board from, from what I heard from listening to, to families and, and to students. So, um, you know, I think that I believe in, in the administrators and athletic director to put more professional development in place and, and work on those plans and goals to move forward in a positive direction.
Could we make comments now or do we wait?
You'll get a chance.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion I get from the board? Okay. Is there any public comment?
Just, uh, one.
Please state your name just for the.
This is Daniela Reagan, and I am, um, just reading a quick one line from Garrett. Do you want to just state your name?
Yes.
Telma Garcia. It is in my opinion that he has to work in his character before he coaches. Because if things that come out of his mouth have made a lot of the players not come up, wait. That's not mine.
Whose mother is that?
Janet, just my mother.
Mine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, another thing, um, since the superintendent brought up the complaints and the negative, I would like to ask if you would care to elaborate on what those complaints were that came up to you? For the, for the good of the public, since you brought them up.
Oh, I just said I'd listen to concerns and I've also listened to positives.
Would you mind sharing what, what those concerns were?
The people that have the concerns, we just, just like, you know, Chase pointed out, you know, the coach really should be here to defend himself, but the parents that have the concerns and the complaints, this is their opportunity.
I just wanted to speed you up, okay? Thank you.
Well, John Reville, Athletic Director, uh, what I must say is gonna be a little different. Uh, my advice is for him not to come, because I've sat at meetings with you and him many over the years, and with you and other coaches, and it's not been a good situation. David is an emotional person. If he came here, like you said, you had questions you had ready for him, I said, David, you will not look good there. I wouldn't look good there, I, I wouldn't come to this if you buzzed under fire, no way. You wanna talk about teacher recruitment? Cause that, it comes out of your mouth a lot. Ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand, this district prioritized hiring coaches. You can write whatever you want, I don't want to answer any questions. They hired coaches and teachers, many of them are still here, good ones. We're not doing that anymore. Okay? There's a lot of them, and a lot of left. You know, we, we, we're, you guys are, and I'm sorry, not all of you, but you're, you're talking out the two sides of your mouth. Teacher recruitment. If I was looking at coming somewhere, it would not be here now. If my kids were little, no way. Because what we do to basketball coaches and other coaches is ridiculous. And I'm tired of it. You know, I dreamt of this job, I wanted to come here. This is not a desirable place to come right now, and I'm embarrassed to say it. You know, there's people that build this community up and there's people that tear it down. And I know I'm making friends right now, I don't really care. But, you know, if, if you wanna talk about keeping somebody, because I can, I can walk to that school and show you teacher after teacher after teacher that you fired, not all of you, we fired a lot of them. And I, I don't even wanna talk, I don't, I got a letter from him. He cares about kids. He might not agree with everything he does, he might not agree with everything I do, but we care about kids. And I know there's a lot of experts up there that think they know how to coach. I, I, I'm, I'm a professional coach, I've coached my whole life, I've put my heart into it, and I'm tired of hearing little speeches about how we need to do things and this and that. Here's a question, another question, the board policy states very clearly the chain of command, correct? There's a chain of command, how we do things. I heard zero complaints this year. So if there was complaints, they did not come through me, they came in correctly. And they violated your own policy. Cause you skipped steps. And those are big mistakes, big financial mistakes. And that's all I wanna say, and I'm not answering any questions, don't care. Vote the way you do, because I don't know, I know that whatever people say out here, doesn't matter. Let's quit the famous character, because that's what it's been. A lot of texting, behind-the-back stuff, and you know what? A guy that makes a few thousand bucks a year doesn't need to be ripped down in the community for it. You know, just vote. I'm tired of hearing it, I'm tired of hearing it, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, I'm tired of hearing it. Because, you know, coaches give their lives to sacrifice, and we, we go away from our own kids and family every weekend, and we have to come back to discard it, cause them. Just vote.
You say you're tired of this, is this your resignation as A D?
Well, wow.
I'm tired of, I'm tired of, I'm tired of how coaches get treated around here, like I've stated multiple times. I'm toxic culture of basketball. No, I didn't.
I've been here a year, John.
The board, Chase, over the last twenty or forty years that I've been here.
How many, how many meetings have we been in together, you said many, how many meetings have we been in together?
You want me to name all of them? Volleyball, basketball, and then fortunately I missed, uh, one that.
No, 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 two.
There was one that I missed.
Two.
Thank goodness.
Two.
Two different coaches.
Let's speak truths.
Two different coaches, and then also meeting with the person we're talking about that fortunately I missed, because I was busy.
Two. So let's speak truths, and we're gonna be in this.
Okay, I've been to two meetings that, that you definitely push people's buttons on, and I told them, don't come. I'm not answering any questions.
My name is Chelsea Anderson, David Lawson is my husband. And I just wanna say, whatever your vote is, David is here for the girls, whether they want them, they want him to be there or not. The issue is with parents, and they get in the girls' head, and then it becomes an issue. The same thing with the past head basketball coach, the same issue, over and over and over, because certain people can't let go of control. And it's, it's a problem. It doesn't just get talked about here, you go out of town and it's embarrassing for the school. It's embarrassing because they hear certain parents over and over and over again, and they name them by name, some players that their parents are talking. Whether you guys like him or not, what he did, doesn't matter at this point, because you're gonna vote how you want to. But David is here for the kids, like that's the big thing that Chase said, we're here for the kids, not just athletes, we're here for students. It's always an athlete issue. There's not an English teacher that gets brought in here because they're not grading correctly, it's a basketball issue. And it's, it's parent comp, always.
My name is Courtney Johnson, for the last three years I've coached two of my girls, I've been in two years with you in school. At the last board meeting I came, I listened about how coaches with less experience are supposed to seek out their more experienced counterparts for help in working through learning to coach and all that jazz. The first year I was here as a girls' basketball coach, there was no mentoring, it was either swim on your own. Then Coach Lawson and Coach Reed decided to join and put their next out, because this is their next, to coach. I came to them and said, I'm not a very good coach, I'm new at this, I know basketball rules, I need to learn how to be a better coach. Right? Cause we seek out people who have more experience than we want to learn. They let me come to their practices. Last summer, I spent all summer with them and all the girls that they wanted to take opportunities that weren't there before. They took me under their wing and they mentored me, because that's what you do with less experienced people. Now I have three kids, fifth grader, first grader, pre-teacher. When my kids are in athletic sports, I can guarantee you, ninety-nine percent of the time, it is my kids' effort, my kids' attitude, my kids' practice, that's the problem, and not the teacher, not the coach. And I am so tired of hearing coaches, you have to be perfect every time you step on the floor, because if you do everything wrong, oh, it's not the kids' effort, it's not the kids' attitude, have been perfected, it's the parents. And I'm really, really tired of hearing that, because it's the kids. I suppose the last time our kids get to learn a lesson, are you gonna tell your kids, hey, when you go get hired, I'm gonna help you get your boss fired? I'm not gonna work with that vendor, because I don't like the way they get the job done. Oh, hey, I have this coworker I absolutely hate, but we have to work together to get this job done, but I'm gonna go to my mom and dad and get them fired. Oh, I don't like this employee, so I'm gonna fire them, even though they have the only expertise I need to get this job done. That's not the real world. High school is the last opportunity for these kids to learn how to get along with team members, teachers, coaches. And they don't like, that they don't get along with, that they're not gonna see eye to eye to. Because if we protect them in a bubble that says, hey, mom and dad are always gonna be here to get somebody fired if you don't like how they coach you or teach you, congratulations, you have just set your kid up for a rude awakening when they get out there. Rude awakening. Such a rude awakening. So I would ask the school board to please judge whether or not you are really hiring a coach based on varsity team makeup, playing time, or whether it's what they are hired to do, which was called basketball. Are they gonna be perfect? No. Am I perfect? No. Are you perfect? No. Look at me here first. Before you start saying this person wasn't perfect, we gave them two strikes, they're out, or done. It should be a long time. And if your administration says, hey, this is the plan, this is the goal, that's what they're here for. Right? So I would, I would hope that you guys would listen to the people that we hire as a community by voting you in to make the best decisions for our kids. Thank you.
Roger Flynn, um, I just wanna stand in support of Coach Lawson. Um, I think the board, um, my recommendation to the board would be to consider the people that you hired to make your recommendations, the people who manage the day-to-day of all the coaches and who know them inside and out better than anyone on the board. The board's role is really to hire the administrators, the administrators, hire everyone else. You guys are just meant to rubber stamp it in some cases. In this case, you've got a recommendation from your admin to say, this is great, we should pursue Coach Lawson. And I think you're missing the point by saying that you should override the people that you've put in place to, to do all this business work.
Any other public comment?
My name is Jessica Erickson, I'm also David's cousin, um, but I also do have two student athletes in high school. Um, and there's a few things, uh, through this. We moved back here in twenty thirteen, and those eleven years, there have been four varsity head coach girls. That, that was in those four years. You guys, if you really think that the grass is greener and that there's gonna be somebody great that's gonna wanna come here and coach here after that kind of a track record. you might find somebody, but I don't think it's going to happen. It's going to be somebody else who thinks that they're like, oh, they need a coach, we have an applicant, so they're going to put it in there. And it's going to be you guys doing the same exact conversation, either near or in two years. And another thing is, I'm a lot like Courtney. My kids, when they have a teacher that they dislike, or a coach that they don't love, I'm like, I don't care. When you're in their classroom, when you're on the court, when you're on the field, they are your boss. You give them utmost respect, one hundred percent. You don't roll your eyes at their face when they're talking to you. When you're out there, when you're out of the school, I don't care what you do then, you can do whatever you want. But when they are in the building with you, you are under their boss. Because when you go on a real world, you try that kind of stuff, and you're going to be fired within weeks. So they have to learn somewhere. They have to learn how to be able to deal with adversity, because everywhere in here, like, you're going to have it. Do you guys have it? One please, at the beginning.
Any further public comments?
Yes, I just want to speak to, my name is Daniela Reagan, and I do have a basketball player. And she also plays volleyball here. And really, I think that whatever happened this past basketball season was just an opportunity for her to grow and for us to teach her. You know, that in life, you don't get to pick your boss or your coach. But I do also talk to her about how she also has to make her, when there's fear, when there's frustration, she has to respectfully address that. And not just talk about, we had someone's bad, but actually address it in person, right? But the coach is different, because a coach's position is to be the mentor, the person that you look up to, as it was mentioned before. To me, I just want to speak to the record of the basketball team last year. I've known David personally and his family for many years. I want to talk about the basketball program for the girls last year. The team deteriorated, in my opinion. We have a board member whose, you know, child plays, and it's great, is a starter, and it's great. So if we have a change of coach that ever came to, then that might not be the case. Listen, I'm here, Jazz is going to play or not play, it's fine. It is fine. She's a whole person outside of basketball. My husband, yes, is passionate about basketball. I'm passionate about everything, volleyball and basketball. So I am here to talk about the record of the team. Okay, if you talk to those girls, if you observe tape, please do. Those girls' regrets is not because of coaching, it's because I think the dynamic between some of the girls, possibly my daughter too, but I never heard anything. The team stopped getting results. They were not being coached. They were not letting the coach coach them. The coach, I don't know, they didn't want to coach them. I am thankful that the assistant coaches were there, because to me, the team seemed to have a better rapport with them. And I am very grateful, and I've been very vocal about that. The AD alluded to text messages behind somebody's back. Please know that I'm not going to say anything behind your back. What I have to say, I will say it to your face. Jamie has known me for years, and I think a lot of you who know me, I just have no filter, unlike my husband. And so I am not the type of person that's going to go text behind the coach's back. I'm going to text the coach and say, we want to discuss this. So please, any rumors of somebody talking behind somebody's back? It's not, it's not from my end. Another thing that I want to address is Coach Lawson, perhaps he just needs to be here. And just speak up, you know? Because I'm sure that there are a lot of reasons why the dynamic that occurred this past basketball season. And as a parent, all I request is that if it involves my daughter, please tell me that my daughter is being disrespectful. Tell me that she speaks with her eyes and she rolls her eyes, because she'll get a smack at the house. Right? So but I'm not going to blame everything of the dynamic I've seen. The team regressed. Yes, they made points. They were playing rat basketball. They were playing street basketball. And that is not what we are. Yes, I understand, as the chair said, this is not about athletics, it's not about basketball, got it? But you've got to help people accountable. You hire them and you fire them. It's okay. It's not the end of the world. Right? Because you don't have a program where you are evaluating the coaches with the villain. You are taking care of one another as teachers, administrators, coaches. And maybe you don't know the sport that much. And I'm going to address the AD's statements and mistruths or on AD last year for gat to call referees for middle school basketball games.
We can't talk about that.
Okay, so I'm saying, I agree that nobody's perfect. But I am saying, just let's hold each other accountable. Let's hold each other accountable. If this is a topic that's been one, two, three, four times, yes. The coach himself said he wanted to quit, right? When he was called out because he walked out of practice. He wanted to quit. And he is passionate, just as I am. Let's just find a way to where our girls are not getting depleted, depleted, and they're losing the love for the game. Right? Some kids are going to be resilient, one or two. Very resilient, no matter what's told to them. If they're playing a full game and they're, you know, flopping and bobbing and making points, good. That's okay. But let's hold each other accountable. What is the program happening? Is it evolving? The basketball program for the girls is not evolving. So there you have it. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Jamie Lawson. Obviously David is my husband. I do have a very different opinion as far as the team decreasing in the field. I got to watch the games here and then immediately after, watch it again and everything twice. Got tremendous growth and at the end of the year selection meeting, other coaches, if I could, I'd like to read David Lawson's words. I first would like to say what an honor and a privilege it is to be the head coach of the Lady Bulldog basketball team. It means a lot to me to be able to share my enthusiasm and love for the sport with all components of the Lady Bulldog basketball program. I would like to acknowledge the student athletes that made up the Lady Bulldog basketball team. I'm extremely proud of the way they played this season. I would like to thank them for representing our school and our community with hard work, positive attitudes, and playing with sportsmanship throughout the season. I also want to acknowledge the seniors that led the program this year. I'd like to thank them for all the hard work, dedication, and leadership on and off the floor. I hope they take that work ethic and drive they showed this season with them in their next chapters of life. They have helped to build this program and make their teammates better. I would also like to thank our managers. They did a great job of nurturing our team spirit. Even when we were down, they always had a positive attitude. We greeted our players with smiles and reassuring words, and I really appreciated that. They added more than they know to our program, and I'd like to thank them again for being a part of our team. I'm deeply appreciative to the parents for their support and encouragement over the season. I recognize the commitment, time, and dedication it takes on the parent's end of things. And I appreciate their willingness to support our program and our student athletes. I also want to thank my assistant coaches for all their support, the knowledge they shared with the athletes, and cohesiveness and professionalism they showed as a member of the Lady Bulldogs coaching staff every single practice and game. This season, the Lady Bulldogs rose to the occasion. They played like a team, filled roles when needed, and stepped up in personal time. I'm so proud of each and every member of our team. I'm the most pleased with the growth that the girls have made as individuals, as a team, and as an entire program. Our improvements were acknowledged at the end of our year selection meeting, where coaches from across the district highly complimented the Lady Bulldogs on the growth we have made throughout the last two seasons. Overall, I appreciate all of the hard work and commitment that was put into this program by all parties. I look forward to the continued growth and success of Townsend's Lady Bulldogs basketball organization. Yes, thank you, David Lawson. So a lot of the opinions that have been shared tonight, they sound distant to me from what I've seen on the floor, from parent interactions that I've witnessed with my husband, but just people approaching him after games. And I just wanted you guys to hear his words on the growth of the girls and how he appreciates everybody that's a part of the entire program.
And the public comment?
My name's Jennifer Beatty. I don't really have a dog in this fight, but I'm just acknowledging that my daughter was one of the managers of the Lady Bulldog team. And she had a positive experience with Coach Lawson, so I'm not really sure what all the complaints are about, but that's my experience.
Hi, I'm Emily Taves. I'm one of the players, sorry. Gosh, I'm getting emotional. I think this is all just a lot, and he's an amazing coach and a great figure in my life. And I think that he helped our team so much on the court, off the court. He helped us become a great team. And we grew great bonds together, and there's so many laughs. And I never had any complaints about him the whole season. I understand that some people might overreact about little things, but you have to understand too that I don't necessarily know what everything was going on, but I think that he's a great coach. I love him as a coach. He's part of my family, like, that's the bond that I built with him. And I don't know what was happening with the other girls and anything, but personally, he helped us all so much throughout this season. And he's always encouraging us, and nobody's perfect. We're all human. Everybody makes mistakes. And that you can't just take it all out on him. That's not okay, because everybody makes mistakes. I'm not perfect. None of you are perfect. But he's a great coach, and I want him to help me through my basketball career, because I feel like I can get somewhere with it. Because he brings down the basics, and he helps you understand. He helps you run through the plays and gives you so many opportunities. Like, that's what I want, and that's what I want for my team. I want them to have a great coach that helps them get places, if that's what they want to do. So I just, overall, he's an amazing coach, and I don't know what all is going on, but I don't, I want him to be the coach for the rest of my high school career and for all the younger people coming in, because he can help them so much and help our program and just make us all better. So I think that he's amazing, and I love him, and he's, he's just, I don't know. But yeah, I think, yes, I just think he should stay.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other discussion from the board?
I'd just like to just quickly say, just because it's unique to everything else, is Emily correct? Thank you for, as a youth member, showing up and speaking your mind, whether it be, I would encourage it positively in your committee, youth member, but it's it's recognized and great. I appreciate that you're willing to put yourself out there.
I would like to point something out. We haven't had a C squad in a long time. In three years, would it?
Okay. I will do a roll call vote. Jason Cool?
No.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Jason, no. Daniel, yes. And I will be asked. All right. Thank you all for your time and your input. Assistant Coach Kevin Reed. Motion to approve, Dave. We moved and seconded to approve Assistant Coach Kevin Reed, Girls' Basketball, Board of Directors, 2024 to 2025. Is there any discussion? Discussion? Any public comments?
I think it's a good hire. He's not a coach, he's a teacher.
Said he thinks he's a good hire as a coach, if no, he's not a teacher.
Any public comments?
I think Coach Reed was pivotal in our team's development this year, and I fully support him being retired onto the team. We really appreciate him. He's a great asset. Yeah.
Yeah, and I will say the one thing that Coach Lawson did well this year is he surrounded himself with a really good coach, and that was Coach Reed. And I hope he harnesses that this next year. I really do. Because that is one key to success, is you surround yourself with good, solid people. So if that continues, I hope he gives more trust to Coach Reed and the board as well.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passed. High school boys, assistant coaches, this is my bad. I apologize. Last time when we separated without boys' basketball, we got done with the head coach and I forgot to come back and have the assistant coaches about it. It's my fault. I apologize for that. So we're doing them tonight. Daniel Herrickfeld and Devin Zito.
Move to approve High School Boys Basketball Assistant Coaches officially. There's an awkward conversation the next one.
It's moved and seconded to approve Daniel Herrickfeld and Devin Zito, Assistant Boys Basketball Coaches. Any discussion? Discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passed. You want to do the-
Yeah, I'll do the remainder. We have Elementary Educator Kay, Educator Holden Sampson. We had the pleasure of having him as a student teacher this year, and my kids absolutely love him. And he had many offers and decided to stay with us here in Townsend. So we're really doing well with our student teachers and keeping them here in Townsend. Once they get to work here and then they go see other districts, they're deciding to stay here. So we're excited about having Holden.
We did have an entire fifth grade team, you know, chase them down all the time.
Oh, my gosh, yes, yes. And the kids.
I was- The fifth grade team of kids.
When I was walking, actually, I was in Miss Lawson's room the other day, and he was the substitute for you. And the kids were like, he's the best I've ever seen. It was fun to see him working with the kids. And excited about having him mentor. So, I mean, because we're doing it individually.
Yeah, we've done this since we're all with it.
I'll move to approve Elementary Educator Holden Sampson.
We moved and seconded to approve Elementary Educator Holden Sampson. Discussion?
Just briefly, if I could speak as a parent. No? Okay, let's trust the elderly. They don't create, I would speak as I trust either. As a parent, my daughter was lucky enough to have her class this year and things that we're now on. The impact he had on her and others, and the fact that she brought it back to me without a question. He was always checking in on them, how they were doing, not educationally, but just emotionally. And her response was, Dad, can we get his contact number soon?
I love that.
I would agree that he is a great asset for this school.
Any discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passed. Denise Bacham, K.
Denise Bacham, K. Eight Educator, please.
I move to approve Denise Bacham, K. Eight Educator.
Jason, did you have a question?
It's been moved and seconded.
Yeah, we'll wait for your question.
Moved and seconded to approve Denise Bacham as K. Eight Educator. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second. Oh, thank you.
Can we get all the certifications and qualifications?
We're renewing her. Yes, we're renewing her teaching contract, her regular teaching contract. She is still working on her certification pathway for her music and to be able to do the music and band endorsement. And we didn't put her on last time because we were hoping she'd have that information, but she's still waiting for some things to come in. So, we're just going to roll her over with a regular teaching contract, which she is, you know, earns as a tenured teacher, and then hopefully we can also put her into the music position upon receipt of the credentials.
Certification list moves her to a tenure or she hasn't?
Oh, she's already. She's been tenured. Yeah. So, she automatically gets a renewal, just like when we did all of them at the last meeting. But I didn't put her on there because we thought timeline wise, but she's still waiting for some of her paperwork.
It's a high school music.
Because she doesn't have the high school music certification yet.
Sure. No, I was just clarifying that it's a tenure or a substitute library, but same age, I'm good. Thank you.
Any discussion? Discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passed. Daniel Douglas Archery is up for the summer.
This will be for next year, the after-school program.
So, both of them are, it's all tied to after.
Yeah, and then twenty-three will be for after, for summer.
Moved to approve Daniel Douglas for after-school and archery for after-school.
So, it's been moved and seconded to approve Daniel Douglas for the after-school program and archery. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, the reason that it's just training because it's training, yes, but training is required. Where's the far ahead?
Thank you. Discussion?
I just want to say I'm glad this is a really exciting program for us to add, Archery. And I look forward to joining the kids at some point, and thankful to our work, Miss Hartman did, to get this put in place. And they do go through a archery certification program that's different than getting your post-stamp. So, they have to go through a certification program to do archery with students and specifically with our school students. And Daniel's really passionate about it and excited about it, and so I'm just thankful to them for coming forward and so that we're going to meet the timeline for her to get that certification to get along.
Any further discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passed. So, employment for 2023, 2024.
So, I went backwards because of discussion, trying to put things up. People wanted to participate in earlier on. So, we're going to go back to this current school year and summer. So, summer camp, and I'll just do these as a group if that's okay, so we can keep moving. Summer camp employment, we have Katie Goodman, Carson Sangray, Laura Frazier, Missy Rock, Todd Beatty, Emmeline Fisher, and Daniel Douglas. Special Education Extended School Year. So, this is required by law that we serve our special education students that meet a certain requirement, and it's in their ID. So, this is to provide those services. And I think we are very blessed to have three teachers that agreed to do this during the summer that are all amazing with our kids. So, Molly Hanson, Megaly Bellinger, and Margaret Swanson will help out our students this summer that qualify for extended school year. Then for high school, once in a digital academy and summer program. This is something that we started last year in the high school, and Miss Everine, and I felt like it went really well. We're excited to offer a chance for kids to catch up on credits and even make, take some additional classes in the summer. And so, we have some extra funds set aside for some of that for this year. And then we'll receive our advanced opportunities for our friends later this summer to keep moving that forward in the future. So, Brittany has stepped up to do that program. And then first, our school food summer program, Cody Skillman and Daniel Douglas did a great job last year. Cody is back from college and ready to come on board and substitute librarian. Emily Herter, our teacher, has been working on her library door since she wants to work in the library. And so, I would appreciate that. And then thank goodness, we got another substitute teacher application. Stephanie Michelson, please. So, if you would approve all of those hires as presented, pending background checks for the remainder of the school year, the summer, I would be grateful.
Just clarification on Emily Herter. That's not that part-time librarian position. That's not getting filled. That's just a substitute. Make a motion to approve all of its hires. All school.
It's like, it moved and seconded to approve the aforementioned list of hires for the 2023, 2024 as presented, and need background checks. Is there any discussion?
Just to follow up on that, so the county librarians work on late evenings and weekends in the summer. So, Emily will be able to substitute at those times when she's not teaching.
Any further discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passed. Resignations.
I am very sad to say we have the resignation of our elementary principal, Mrs. Hartman. Tonight's way too emotional. And she has just done a fantastic job. I couldn't do it without her. She is a taskmaster amongst many other things and is integral part of our team. We have an awesome team, so it's going to be hard without her. She does a lot more than people realize with federal programs, and then of course has just created a rock star of a fifty and summer program and so many other things, helped implement the new reading program and just really had a positive impact on our elementary school and district. And when I got called for her reference check, they told me I really sold myself out of as the person for our school, which I realized I was doing, but I had to be honest. So, she was offered a great opportunity to advance in her career and make a change. So, I'm really happy for her, but sad to see her go. Somebody else wants to control me? I don't know if you'll be able to hold. Yeah, right now. Okay. And Kitchen maid Ashley Contar did a great job this year, and we were thankful for her as well. And glad that she hung out and sticking up through the whole school year for us, but is going to move on.
Could you add that she's also resigning from summer food program?
Ashley Contar is resigning from summer food program. Okay.
Thank you.
I move to approve resignations as stated.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the resignations as presented. Any discussion?
I like to say, Christina, I really appreciate that you you stood up that fifty-day program, the after-school program, the summer program. You're what I call just a throwbred horse. You definitely did second to none in my book. And what I also really admire about you is your accountability that you hold others to. You're not afraid to do the hard right, and because of it, our K through five is thriving. And I really appreciate that. That's something I learned early on. So, I'm going to help surround yourself with good people, not afraid to cut slim rope. So, thank you for that. I hope to see you back here someday. Don't forget about us. We'll miss you, Teetake. So, Godspeed and best of luck. On easily.
Christina's cousin, Austin Polly, and we've obviously been very close together for a long time. I'll miss her. This is gonna be me and I. Also, good luck, Brad. No, she's just instrumental in so many ways, and I don't think people realize how hard a lot of people working on you, thinking to make sure everything happens. So, she's a great problem solver. I'm just gonna help her with all my math. I do letters. That was mine out for her. She does the numbers, and that's our partnership. So, we'll figure it out, but that's the one thing. Come home sometime.
I just want to thank everyone without those teams that I've had here, and these two taught me a lot. And I think we gained up on Brad a little bit from four miles. All these women you had to work with. But I learned a lot. There's still words that resonate with me every day with these two, and I'll never forget them, and I want to thank the team. That's a phenomenal team I'm giving them. Truly. And those for the board, I appreciate everything you guys have done and believe in me. And I'm looking forward to my new adventures. It'll be fun, but without your guys to support, I don't know what to do. So, thank you. I will be here till the end of June, and so I'll do another resignation for summer camp and after-school program later. And I did work out with my other board to go back and forth in July because I want to make sure the summer camps are fulfilled. It's my passion project, so I'll make sure that they go. Seriously.
Thank you for your consideration, all the time you put in. My vote today, though, is going to be ten to the fishing spots that we want. That is mine, but no, you've been a great asset this week. Mr. Kennedy.
Yes. Being on the board has been a learning experience, for sure. Learned something new every day, every meeting. Switching from that role of a parent to a trustee gives a whole different insight to the mechanism that we call public school. You guys have very challenging jobs. And the things that you face day in and day out that the average parent, the average student, community member doesn't have a clue. I've appreciated working with you. I've appreciated being a part of that transition when we went from being students to the vice principal to the principal. And I knew that you wouldn't stop there, and that, you know, the goal-driven decisions are the things that keep us going. And I'm very proud of you and pleased that you are continuing to pursue that. Wish you the best of luck, and yeah, maybe someday we'll get to bring you back, but best of luck to you. I appreciate all you have done for the students and for everybody in the community.
Any further discussion?
I gotta say thanks to Christina. I don't want to phone anyone up here. I'll try and stop it. Stop it and say hi before you're done, but I've just been thoroughly impressed for many factors, many of which I didn't even know that you did, but thank you for all you do and have done to make us so successful, and the quality of work that you come, the work ethic that you bring, the attention to detail, your follow-through. I know if I ask you something, you'll do it done. It's just, you are a rock star for this district, and I really appreciate the fact that you're able to grow and utilize your skills, even though it may be in a different area. Appreciate you guys the best, and just so much appreciate all that you've done for my family, but then also just for the community as well.
Thank you.
Any public comment? All? Stop, don't go. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passed. That might have been the slowest. Doesn't seem to match. Okay, moving on to policies.
All right, so we are still working on policies. So, like I said, I work with, I've been working with multiple folks on some of the policies that are coming out on emerging sports. But there's not anything ready to go yet. I was hoping we might have one, but those are still being drafted. And then Mrs. Hartman was very adamant about having a policy on here, as you know she can be. But we will have the first reading of that one at our June meeting, and I promise we will get it rolling before you leave because that was one of her goals. So, we will make sure we go over a student grading policy for looking at different grading options at the next meeting and have that ready for you. So, today we just have policy seventy-three twenty, and then we are ready to go. And this policy, all we had to do was change and the correct one is not right. Oh, okay, up here where it says, I see, I missed it on the second one. So, you guys gave purchasing approval for forty thousand dollars to the superintendent. As you know, I often run things by you that are much less than that. And but sometimes we do need to purchase something in if we have an opportunity, or there can be curriculum packages that cost, you know, quite a bit of money, so we have we try not to delay it. But as you know, I offered a text, call, email. I sent out a group email that when we purchased a van from the sheriff's department, for example, even though it wasn't very costly, they gave us a great deal. I, you know, didn't want the board to say, how did we end up with this sheriff's van? Or whatever. So, anyways, I run everything by them, but also need to have the ability to purchase things as we need to make the school run itself. I will get that second number changed on there, and I've done one of the second reading.
The van has saved us.
It's gone. It all stops.
No, she's still the one.
All move to approve the policies seventy-three twenty on second reading as correctly.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve policy seventy-three twenty as correctly. Is there any discussion? Four second reading. Discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, motion passed. Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate you. Goodbye.